Test.
Test, test, test.
Thank you.
Mr. Allgood, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Alright. Thank you, sir.
We'll call the order our regularly scheduled city council meeting for the city of Malden on Monday, February 17th, 2025 at approximately 7:00 PM. Records reflect that all members of council are present, along with myself. Mr. Allgood is attending via Zoom. So we appreciate him making the time for that. Mr. Duncan, our city administrator. Mr. Saxon, our assistant city administrator and Ms. Miller are present, along with our city attorney, Mr. Hughes. Parish department heads and members of the public, as well as some distinguished members of our own American Legion Post 271. So appreciate them being here. I believe in Adam. Implication, pleasure, Legion Miss King. Good, thank you.
Those who wish to join me in prayer, please ballot this time. Gracious Lord, as we come together tonight, we ask for guidance and wisdom and support as we begin this meeting. Fill us with grace as we make decisions on the future of our city. Lord, continue to remind us that all that we do here today and all that we accomplish is for the greater glory of you. We ask all these things in your name. Amen. Please join me. Pledge.
To legions by United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess I already introduced what I'm doing. Next item on our agenda is proclamations and presentations. One of the truly bright moments of being in the center seat up here as I get to do these. And so I'm going to come down there and then I will introduce our presentation proclamations for this evening. The first item before us is for our American Legion Post 271. I'm going to introduce you to Commander, Mr. John Burton. His second vice commander going to help you with that or okay, does he need some help getting up? That's the old Navy guys that don't walk very well. Want to come on up? Appreciate it. And I, with that, I will turn it over to you, John, and let you go from there.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. Alright, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Like I said, I'm John Burton, Commander Post 271 and John Macioz, our second vice. Tonight, we're here to honor three of Malden's finest. I couldn't think of a better day to do this than on President's Day. First, President, first President of the United States, George Washington, and also the 16th President Abraham Lincoln. Two of the finest dedicated their lives to public service to our community, state and nation. So we will start with the Law Enforcement Officer of the Year. The American Legion Malden Post 271 would like to call down Detective Jenna Wilson. Right, the 2025 Law Enforcement Officer of the Year, Jenna Wilson. The recipient is chosen and the selection process is based on exemplary service, dedication, bravery and contributions to public safety. This award recognizes the officer who goes above and beyond the call of duty to protect and serve our community. Congratulations. Also, don't leave yet. And also, we have a, we have a certificate to go with that, and I'll read that. 2025 Law Enforcement Officer of the Year Certificate of Commendation presented to Jenna Wilson of Malden Police Department. This commendation is awarded for outstanding public service benefiting our community, state and nation. Next though, Daniella Rowley. The American Legion Malden Post 271 would like to present the 2025 Public Safety Award to Daniella Rowley. The recipient is chosen and the selection process is based on exemplary service, dedication to bravery and contributions to public safety. This award recognizes the officer who goes above and beyond our call of duty to serve and protect our community. By Public Safety of the Year. Alright. Last but not least, Alejandro Marquez, please come on down. Alright, the American Legion Malden Post 271 would like to present the 2025 Firefighter of the Year to Alexandro Marquez. The recipient is chosen on a selection process based on outstanding service, bravery, leadership and contributions to fire safety and emergency response. This award honors the firefighter who has demonstrated exceptional dedication and courage in his duties to protect lives and property.
Miss King serves as Chair of Public Safety Committee. I wanted her here because public safety is her, her baby for this term. So appreciate that. So wherever you want to start. Jenna's family? process, well, actually was the second process. Worked with Joel at IBM many, many years ago, and we both worked with the former council person that serves here with Steve Bunch. All of us IBMers, so you know, we really enjoyed those careers. Joel stayed around a little bit longer than I did. He's a good bit older than I am. Not true, but to that. So you want me to read it first, or you want to stand? You're okay standing up here while I read it? That's up to you. Come on up. Whereas the city of Malden recognizes the importance of Black History Month and the contributions of black community members to the success of this great city, region, and state. And whereas it is important that during this month, we recognize individuals throughout history, our nation, and here locally who have made a positive impact, broken barriers, and forged new paths in music, arts, science, sports, education, and civic engagement. And whereas Mr. Joel Nathaniel Brockman, Jr. was born in Greenville, South Carolina on August the eighth, nineteen forty-seven, attended Bryson High School before earning a bachelor's degree in economics from Johnson C. Smith University in Charlotte, North Carolina. And whereas Mr. Brockman has been married to the former mayor, Henrietta Johnson, for fifty-eight years, and together they have four sons, and he worked diligently for IBM for more than forty-two years. Whereas Mr. Brockman ran for Malden City Council as a way to show his children civic responsibility and to be a voice for the community. And whereas Mr. Brockman became the city of Malden's first black city councilman in November nineteen ninety-five, when he was elected to fill the unexpired term of Rod Beard and served on city council until December thirty-first, nineteen ninety-seven. And whereas Mr. Brockman went on to serve on the Malden Planning Commission for several terms and the Malden Zoning Board of Appeals and serves his community in various other ways. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I Terry Merritt, Mayor of the city of Malden, along with all the residents of our city and my fellow council members, that here I proclaim that we are grateful for Mr. Brockman's service to the city of Malden and his steadfast commitment to our city, his neighbors, and the community at large, and we are proud to honor him dated this seventeenth of February, twenty twenty-five. Joel, I'll present that with you. plan, something came up and they were not able to be here, so we will hold them for another date. Next item of business before us is our read and approval of the minutes for our city. See those that are in your packet. Our city council meeting of January twenty, twenty twenty-five. Those have been in your packet you've had. Does anyone have any changes, adjustments, corrections? Hearing none, seeing none, if you're okay, we'll accept those by unanimous consent. Strategic planning workshop also of January the twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Any changes noted on that? We'll accept that by unanimous consent also. Then the special call meeting of February the third, twenty twenty-five. All good with those? No changes noted, okay? We'll accept those by unanimous consent also. All right, Ms. Miller, we have no one signed up for public comments, so we'll move on down. Report from our city administrator, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few items for council tonight and the public. First, I'm excited to report that Public Works has completed storm debris pickup operations in the city. Our contractor, which was Bell Moore, demobilized just the other week after completing their final tasks. SC DOT is also in the final days and weeks of their work in the area. A final report will be provided to council once all outstanding invoices are paid and a final tally of debris totaled. Special thanks to SC DOT's Brandon Wilson, their storm debris contractors, of course, our Public Works Director, Matthew Fleeman, Bell Moore, who is our primary contractor, and for our wonderful residents for their hard work, dedication, and patience as we recover from the worst storm to impact our area in more than forty years. And we are also still on target to submit our reimbursement request to FEMA by March thirty-first. So I'm excited about that. Next up, SC DOT will soon begin resurfacing Highway two seventy-six through Malden. The project is expected to start around March first from Pleasantburg Drive up in Greenville and then end at Standing Springs Road, right there at the three eighty-five interchange. Based on a conversation last week, SC DOT will start in Greenville, move south. Crews should roll through our community in the next few months with the majority of resurfacing activities taking place after eight P. M. So we'll have lane closures nightly once they get to the city. According to SC DOT's project website, paving should be completed by July of this year. And for more information, we'll provide more information as we get closer or as crews get closer to the city, and we'll make sure we've got that on social media and our website and things like that. Next, I want to invite everyone to come out to the Malden Creator Chamber of Commerce Small Business Expo that's coming up in a few weeks. On Thursday, February twenty-seventh, from five thirty to eight thirty at the TD Gallery over at Clemson Icar or CU Icar, Five Research Drive. The community is invited to network and explore twenty-five featured small businesses. Entry is free, but registration is preferred, just so they can have a headcount. For more information on this, invite folks to check out the chamber's website or their Facebook page. It's going to be a great event. And lastly, we want to invite the community out for, we're hosting an open house at the Ray Hopkins Senior Center on Friday, February twenty-eighth, from eleven A. M. until one P. M. A short program will begin at eleven fifteen A. M. with remarks by the mayor and other dignitaries, followed by a tour of the recently renovated facility. Renovations of the facility included a new roof, improvements to the multipurpose court outside, walking trail improvements, ADA bathroom upgrades, new flooring and doors, interior painting, and other improvements. Light refreshments will be provided, and we hope to see lots of regular faces and some new ones as well. These improvements were made possible from funding secured by our state delegation and the South Carolina Department of Aging. Perhaps, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Any questions, council? I always have to be sure when someone is remote, we need to pause for an extra second or two because there's a delay there. So I saw the shaking of the heads, so I take that as he has no thumbs up, we're good to go. Appreciate that. Our reports from standing committees, economic planning development, Mr. Matney.
We're good, Mayor.
Sir, public safety, Miss King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take a couple of seconds to thank everyone involved with the polar plunge. I just missed you.
I didn't plunge.
I didn't plunge either. Out at Discovery Park Island, Island Park on Saturday. So the police department and our explorers participated in this as the fundraiser for Special Olympics, and they exceeded, I don't have the final tally. Okay, so the total raised was over twelve thousand, and then just, but just the explorers and Malden P. D. raised over five thousand. So their goal was five thousand, and I think they reached close to fifty-five, maybe a little bit more than that. So kudos to everyone involved with that. I got there just in time to, for the misting rain, the extremely cold weather, and those crazy folks going, they decided to go down the water slide versus taking a plunge, however that may be. So it was quite entertaining, but I froze just standing there watching. So as long, as well as our city administrator. So anyway, just wanted to update y'all on that. It was a great event. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss King. Public Works, Mr. Krailin.
Nothing this time.
Finance and policy, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of items. First, we're getting into the budget time. Just a heads up, we've got our first budget meeting. Workshop with city council was going to be March thirteenth. All right, so they are rolling along. The Cyber Karma is getting us ready for that next, next budget. Next item I actually have is going to be directed at Mr. Allgood, who will be speaking after me. Mr. Allgood, I'm going to need an explanation for the hand dancing instead of clapping in your update, if you don't mind, because the, our legal representation and I, we're laughing over here, and we don't really know what we're laughing at. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I am just overwhelmed with excitement to now recognize Mr. Allgood from Recreation.
Thank you, Mayor. No one likes to be put on a waiting list, so if you're interested in baseball, softball, flag football, or lacrosse, your deadline is February twenty-third. That is the deadline. And as far as my happy hands, that is the sign language for clapping. Given that I am remote, I didn't actually clap clap. I decided to do the sign language clap. So that's the, the happy dancing that you're seeing. Of course, I am happy about everything that we just witnessed. So that is it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I believe that's this.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Our attorney is not as cultured as I am, so didn't know that. Rightfully admit that.
Thank you, Mr. Allgood. Business Valuable Services, Mr. Deanback.
I'm not sure what else I can add to this at this.
Down with grace. All right, moving right along, the next item, unfinished business ordinances on second reading. Ms. Miller, you want to introduce that?
We have one ordinance for second reading tonight, and it's the solid waste ordinance revisions, and council was asked to approve the changes to the solid waste ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Coming from Public Works, Mr. Krailin.
Yes, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the changes to the city of Malden solid waste ordinance.
I have a motion, Mr. Krailin. Is there a second?
Second.
Take it from Miss King. Any discussion? Think y'all got the latest updates that came with the highlighted comments that Mr. Hughes promised us last month? So we're good to get those. Everybody's had a chance to read those and assimilate them into the document, all the outstanding work you guys did on that. Appreciate it very much. Yeah, the comments. Hearing none, I always got to look. Overlooking them, got it. All those in favor of the motion to approve the changes to the solid waste ordinance as submitted, say aye.
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 Got that one. That's unanimous. Good. Next on agenda, nothing on first reading. Next item is standing committee items, the amphitheater stage cover, believe Mr. Matney.
Thank you, Mayor. Move that we approve the funding plan for the new stage cover that includes the PAR grant, state A tax funds, H and A tax funds, as well as additional funding that staff is seeking through local grant programs and the profit and nonprofits, including an ask for thirty thousand dollars, and that we select Hogan Construction Group as the lowest responsive bidder for the design and construction of the amphitheater stage cover at the Malden Cultural Center.
I have a motion, Mr. Matney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second and stereo, Mr. Krailin and Mr. Reynolds both. Ms. Miller, I'll let you pick that one. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated by Mr. Matney, say aye.
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 Unanimous also. Thank you. Next item before us is no parking on Gateway Boulevard. You want to introduce that, Ms. Miller, or you want to just go right ahead?
Council is requested to designate areas along Gateway Boulevard and Park Plaza as no parking zones.
I believe that's Public Works, Mr. Krailin.
I'd like to make a motion to designate the area along Gateway Boulevard and Park Plaza as no parking zones.
If a motion, Mr. Krailin, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Deanback. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to accept, say aye.
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 Unanimous, seven of you are also. Item, capital lease proceeds, Ms. Miller.
Council is requested to approve the use of remaining capital lease proceeds funds to purchase an additional admin vehicle instead of a police vehicle.
This coming from finance, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve using the remaining capital lease funds to purchase an additional admin vehicle instead of a police vehicle.
If a motion is there, a second?
Second.
Second for Miss King. Any discussion?
Mayor, just a quick explanation.
Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the F Y twenty twenty-five budget, we allotted about one point four million dollars for capital lease purchases. So due to just price increases and et cetera, et cetera, we had six police vehicles budgeted in that. And this, just due to price increases, weren't able to cover all six of them, so we're purchasing five and using the remaining here for admin vehicle. That's the only explanation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to accept, say aye.
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 I know we do this quite often, and we always kind of struggle over it, so I went back to my memo from Mr. John Dugan, who was our former city attorney from October nineteenth, twenty twenty. When we have things, committee of the whole, one thing he recommended to us and council that if you want to make the motion, you say, I move to consider. council that if you want to make the motion, you say, "I move to consider, state the item by committee, the whole, using the informal method." And that way, we can move right in and it need be delayed. So the next item before us is to consider 2025 strategic plan, if council would consider the informal method.
I'd also like to include item E with the city center village master plan.
All right, so via the informal method, a motion by, or if I credit you with the motion?
Absolutely, Mayor. I'm here to take the credit.
Motion via the informal, must be an election. Motion to be, consider items D and E via the informal method. Uh, motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. King. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those, whoops, Mr. Krailin?
Getting too fast on me. Just real minor, uh, thing I did find on the, um, city center strategic plan on the map, uh, behind Bohemian Bull, we have a property.
Uh, we gotta get to the informal method first.
I apologize.
Nope, you're good. It's confusing.
Yes.
All right, so consider these two items by the informal method, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, uh, we'll take the strategic plan first. Uh, any, it's in your packet. Any questions, comments, introductions? What would council like to do about the strategic plan?
Move we approve the 2025 city model strategic plan as presented.
You have a motion, Mr. Matney, to approve as submitted, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Steinbach. Any discussion there? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so A D is accepted unanimously. Next item before us via the informal method is the city center village master plan. What will be the council's pleasure on that one?
Move we approve the city center village master plan as presented.
Can't see. Yeah, promotion, Mr. Matney, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. King. Any discussion, Mr. Krailin?
Just a real minor thing, I looked on the, uh, map of the page, this is 57 on the bottom of it, uh, does not show the prop, as the property, city property in yellow, uh, the, the parking lot by Bohemian Bull is not in yellow. Minor thing, so I thought we might get that updated. Was it?
Right. Mr. Duncan, you got that note? All right. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick comment, really kind of, uh, patting you guys on the back as, as we look at this kind of stuff, moving the city into a future. This is time spent outside of our normal city business hours, planning, talking, doing workshops, um, and, and really just want to, to thank everyone up here as, as we all try to do both family life and work and all those things, and then, and then come back to the city and try to think about the future growth and how to best plan for our city. So just really want to thank everyone up here, as well as staff, for the extra effort put into the, the thought of trying to put into the future. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Any other comments? All right, hearing none, all is in favor of the acceptance of the city center, city center village master plan as submitted, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries unanimous. Takes us out of the informal method, and so next item on our agenda is the, uh, public comments. No one signed up. We're good there. Uh, council concerns? Mr. Matney?
Uh, not concerns, but just a couple of, uh, quick congratulations. Number one, uh, Mr. Kummelander's old self isn't here, but today is his birthday, and Wednesday, I know that you're gonna be celebrating, uh, another trip around the sun, so happy early birthday to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Matney. Yeah, I'm glad you reminded me, I did not text Mr. Kummelander early this morning, even though my calendar said to do it. Thought I would see him, but then I didn't get out there, so.
We all are about the same age.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Probably in better shape.
Y'all make sure to tell him I said that.
And tell him I said I was in better shape than he is. Yeah, I moved here. He was here when dirt was created. So, we enjoy picking on him as we do our various other department heads, so comes along really, really good and in handy. All right, any other council comments or concerns? All right, hearing none, the next item before us would be a consideration for an executive session. I believe that would be Mr. Matney.
Thank you, Mayor. Move we enter executive session to consider negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements, and the proposed sale purchase of property is allowed under 30-4-70A2.
All right, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Steinbach. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of entering into executive session, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we will consider ourselves in executive session at 7:37, and we'll reconvene
Be sure to turn your mics on. Ready, Frank?
Got it.
All right, good. Mr. Matt, you want to report out?
Sure, Mayor. Coming out of executive session at 8:12. No decisions were made and no votes were taken.
Thank you, sir. Next item is possible action on the items discussed in executive session. Any action items here and seeing none? Okay, there. Well, it's pleasure of adjournment.
We adjourn.
Do the adjourn second.
Second.
From the unanimous decision here. All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign here and now. Oh, Frank's good. We adjourned at 8:14.